Everyone should mute now.
Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel-to-gavel coverage of town and school board meetings to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack New Hampshire Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.
Okay.
Hey, Cindy.
Good evening and welcome to the October 28th special meeting of the Merrimack School Board. Please take your microphones off mute and rise to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
The flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, indivisible.
Invisible with liberty.
And justice.
Versus plural.
Okay, the second item on our agenda is to go through the public participation guidelines for the remote meeting. First, I wanted to just make a quick comment that this meeting is remote simply because it's a special meeting and we were unable to get space where we would normally have our meetings, but going back to our regular schedule at this point in time, we're planning to continue to have our live meetings in the Matthew Thornton Room at Town Hall. So because we are remote, we can't take live testimony like we would if we were in the meeting room where we usually meet. So if anyone wants to send any public comments, please send them to one of, in one of two ways. You can send an email to publiccomments@sa26.org or to go to the district website, www.sau26.org. On the posting of our meeting tonight, you will see a linked form that you may complete. Regardless, we do require your name and address for the record. So if you are sending an email to publiccomment@sa26.org, you must include your name and address so that we have it for the record. Based on the amount of information we get tonight, our goal is to always be able to read verbatim all the comments as we receive them. If for some reason, and this hasn't happened yet, the comments become too heavy in, if they become, you know, more than what we would be able to read into public comment, we really would then not read any of them. It's really an all-or-nothing proposition. Regardless, we will put all public comments into our minutes for tonight's meeting, but we would not be able to read them tonight if we can't read all of them. So with that, we will go on to the next agenda item, which is the status of school operations in the context of COVID-19. I'm going to just go ahead and turn it over to our Superintendent Dr. McLaughlin.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it and I appreciate the opportunity that you, the boards afforded us to have a special meeting. That's very, very helpful. So you've been doing that consistently since the early days of this and I, we all really appreciate it. So I'm going to share my screen tonight and I'm going to wait for a cue that it is up and visible. Can you all see that?
It's visible, Mark.
Okay, thank you. So we've been, this, this date has been long in coming. I just want to go back in time, just again, provide some context. So on July 13th, when we presented to the board our recommendation for what we were going to do in the beginning of this school year, meaning a hybrid model, one of the things that we did at that time was to say that we needed some time to evaluate what the experience would be like of teaching and learning in a pandemic. Because as you all know, in the spring, all instruction was remote. So we didn't have the experience of what it would be like to build a schedule in a pandemic that allowed for students to make choices to be live on location or remote. Nor did we have the experience factor of knowing what it was going to mean for our staff, all of whom have the right to the same options that our students have, to work remotely or on location, based on very specific requirements provided through by FFCRA, the Federal Cares Act, Family Medical Leave Act, or Americans with Disabilities Act. Nor did we know what it would be like once you brought students and teachers back together. We talked a lot in the summer about the fact that, you know, when we bring 4,000 students back or 2,000 students back on any given day and teachers, that that, that was going to be a real, interesting and challenging dynamic to wade through in the midst of an ongoing pandemic. And so what we said back in July was that we needed to take a break in late October to give ourselves nearly two full months, not quite, but nearly two full months of experience so that we could assess, how is it to teach and learn in the midst of a pandemic? What are the challenges? What are the successes? What are the lessons learned? We also had no idea what the trajectory of the pandemic was going to be. And so we needed that time from early September through now to assess that. Would it magically disappear? Well, it hasn't. Would it continue at a low level? Would it increase? What? And so in any event, back in July, we said that we would have a stake in the ground of October 30th. Well, it's two days prior to that and I'm grateful for the board, as I said, to allow us the opportunity to talk to you about our recommendation now that we've had that time to assess. So what I want to just start out sharing are the considerations that have impacted the recommendation that I'm going to make to the board tonight. And there are three. Two of them come directly from the state of New Hampshire, recommendations for guidance around this very question. The first one is to assess the level of community transmission of the virus. The second is to assess the level of in-school transmission of the virus. And the third, which is unique to us, but I would assume it's unique to every school district in one way or another, has something to do with staff availability. And I'll say more about that in a minute, but that is a very, very critical factor here. And so those were the three main considerations that had to be evaluated when coming up with the recommendation. So let's talk about community transmission in Merrimack. So as of today, we are, the Town of Merrimack would be considered minimal transmission. If you look at the left, the second to the left, level of community transmission minimal, the state recommends an assessment of that on three criteria. COVID-19 PCR positivity as a seven-day average and our community is less than 5%. Number of new infections per 100,000 population over 14 days or calibrated to the population size of our, of any given community, and that's less than 50%. And number of new hospitalizations per 100,000 or calibrated, per 100,000 people over the prior 14 days, less than 10%. So by all accounts, Merrimack is very fortunately in the minimal category. So that's a factor that had to be considered when weighing the recommendation. Let's look at in-school transmission across all schools as of October 28th, 2020. That would be classified as low and I'm pleased to say that if it were, if there were a category less than low, we'd be in it. And that is transmission within the school facility, zero or sporadic cases with no evidence of transmission within the school setting. Merrimack schools, all six fall well within that category. Student absenteeism due to illness, less than 15%. I'll share a Merrimack snapshot in just a minute. And then staff capacity to conduct classes and school operations. So all of those three are low. However, I want to just talk for a minute now and then again in a little while about that last category, staff capacity to conduct classes and school operations. That is normal, but normal is a bit of a misnomer. And I think tonight it's a good opportunity to describe what I mean by a misnomer. Because of our very, very strict guidelines for staff, meaning they have to sign a daily attestation form that we're upon their ask to answer certain questions about symptoms or relationship to people who've tested positive or travel outside New England. And because we are following very, very strictly that, it on occasion means that we have teacher absences, not due to their lack of desire to work, but because if they have a sniffle, just like a student, we have said to them, we cannot differentiate between a COVID sniffle and a, just a regular cold and flu sniffle. And any parent out there listening knows that they, you know, perhaps have been called about that with their own children. Well, we're holding our teachers and our administrators to that same standard. So what that means is that on any given day, we are relying heavily on substitutes. I think Merrimack has done a smart thing because back in the early fall, we contracted with substitutes so that they would be specifically ours. Normally subs just, you know, take a phone call from whoever calls them first and they decide where they want to go. Litchfield, London Dairy, Salem, Merrimack. Substitutes like bus drivers are hard to come by. And so we realized that we were going to really need to rely on substitutes. So we have contracted with a group of subs and each of our schools has daily assigned to them between three and five, in some cases maybe a little bit more, but in general, three to five substitutes that are daily dedicated to a school. And they are used by and large every single day. And on the rare case that a teacher who's assigned to a particular building isn't needed, that substitute is deployed to another school where they are needed. So that has kept the wheels on the bus. But I want to point out, as I will in a little while, that the capacity to conduct classes and school operations hangs by a very, very narrow or thin thread. So when we say it's normal, it is. We're able to conduct our business, but I wouldn't want the, anybody to get the impression that on a daily basis, keeping that together has been easy or is likely to continue without I also just want to make a reference to data. So data is kind of a funny thing, as many of us know. It can be manipulated in a thousand ways to prove a particular point that one wishes to make. But if we look at the state of the state of New Hampshire right now, the data challenge is this, from March to October, this is a graph that was published, that is published today on the DHHS website. And if you look to the far left of the graph, that's early March. And if you look more closely, if this were interactive, which it is not, but if you go to March 13th, you'd see that there were zero cases, new cases in the state of New Hampshire on March 13th. I say March 13th because as you know, March 13th was the date that Merrimack and neighboring communities decided to close down. And then two days later, on March 15th, the governor followed suit. So there was no data on March 13th to support the idea of closing. None. There were zero active cases that day in the state of New Hampshire. There were therefore none in Merrimack and certainly none in our schools. But there was another effect in the days after February break leading up to March 13th that very much played in. And that was fear of the unknown, the growing concern that people rightly had as to how bad this thing is, how it can be transmitted, who could get it? And we all know that we didn't know nearly as much then as we know now, but on that day, the pressure was great from outside the community, outside the teaching community and the school community into the family community that it was not really sustainable. I agreed. It wasn't. It was a scary time. And so in those early days, I joked with our leadership team this morning, that I remember putting out a message saying, well, let's just hunker down for a week or so and hopefully this will go away. How naive that sounds in retrospect, but at the time, that's really kind of what we thought, at least what I thought. Well, seven plus months later, here we are. Now, if you look to the right side of the graph, as of today, today is the third highest daily rate of active cases that we've had since the state began recording that. The highest was in early May, followed by a little later in May, and then there was a significant dip through the summer. And what's happening in New Hampshire is following a trend nationally. This is not sadly going away. And, and so the point that I want to make there, that I've been trying to make over a period of time, is that data can't be the only thing that we use, criteria that we use to make a determination about what to do next. Because if it were, we would have stayed open in March and gone remote today. But we are learning to deal with this and, and we have put into place, as Matt Chevenell will remind you all in a few minutes, a number of safety precautions and protocols that have allowed us to this point to continue operations in a hybrid manner. But I think it's important to just sort of as a reflection on reality as we're living it, data is a funny thing and not always entirely reliable. So let's look at a snapshot of the Merrimack School District right at the moment. As of, as of yesterday, the total number of confirmed positive cases of COVID-19 amongst staff since September 9th, the first day of school, is two. And, and I think that's a very significant number because we have approximately 850, if you include teachers and all other categories, and two people. And, and I think that that is a remarkable testament to the seriousness with which our staff, total staff, have approached this. They know their job, they know how important it is, and they have been nothing short of, just, nothing short of, well, I don't know quite the word. They have been impressive in their fidelity to caring for themselves, which doesn't mean that those two individuals were not, because as we know, things happen. And, and my understanding is that in one case, the person is fully recovered and is back to work and in another case is soon to be. Thank goodness for that. But that's a pretty impressive number. The total number of confirmed student positive COVID-19 cases in each school between 99 and 1027 is as you see. One at Master Cola Elementary School, zero at Reed's and Thornton's, zero at the upper elementary school, two at the middle school, and eight total at Merrimack High School. Now, there might be an addition today, not confirmed yet to me, an addition or two, but well within, well within bounds, very well contained. The average daily student absence is due to illness, and let me just explain to you how we know that. There are times when a student is absent because they went to grandma's birthday party and they came home late and they've been asked to, they stayed home. There are a lot of reasons that a student is absent. But we are specifically now encouraged to, within the bounds of privacy, to find out why is a student absent, particularly if it relates to illness? Because it has everything to do with what we're trying to do in terms of keeping a lid on the coronavirus in our schools. And so we gently ask the question, oh, so is Jimmy got the sniffles today? Is he okay? Oh, it's just a rash or it's whatever. So, so we have some data to be able to say that the average daily student absence is due to illness between the first day of school and the last date that we have clear records for that, the 23rd, is 1.6. So the data has supported that we are really at a low or minimal rate in Merrimack. That's very important as well. So that's a snapshot as of today. And I also want to point out that this virus has a devastating way of stinking up on all of us. And so I hope that those numbers hold, but I don't think they will. But we are able to withstand it, we have so far, but those are the reality, that's the reality right now. So if we bear all that in mind, what is the recommendation? And the recommendation that I'm making to the board as of today is to maintain current operations. And what that means is hybrid, for those who've chosen hybrid, fully remote, for those who have chosen fully remote, and an allowance to switch options, which John will describe briefly in just a second. Why do we have it green? Because in a few minutes, I'm going to talk to you about a system that we're attempting to put in place that's intended to help our community better understand how it is that we have had to make certain decisions in the event that we have made them. But right now, we are green, which means good to go. So before I turn to John just briefly to talk about the allowance to switch options, I want to say, I want to say this. The reason that we have maintained, are maintaining the current options, some might be wondering, wow, those numbers are pretty good. Why wouldn't that suggest that we go back full? And what I tell you is this, I believe that those numbers are good because of the current system. Because we have half a population in our schools on any given day. Because the board supported our efforts to put into place a mask policy. Because we have put into place a travel policy. Because of all the efforts that Matt and his team have put forth to keep our schools safe. That is what is keeping our ability to maintain operations the way they are. Given the trajectory of the virus in the state of New Hampshire and in our local community, though it's low, it, it has increased. And surrounding communities that have increased and because people are not sheltering or, you know, isolating as they did in the spring, the likelihood of transmission is, that it would increase, increases as well. So if we went remote with zero daily cases in the state of New Hampshire and zero in Merrimack on March 13th, the data certainly doesn't suggest that we go in the opposite direction on October 28th. Neither however, does it suggest that we go fully remote. There is no suggestion in, in our mind that that would be the case. And so we are right now recommending to the board that it is a maintain current operations green status. I'll say more about the other colors in a minute, but John, if you could just briefly speak about the, the allowance to switch options, I would appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you, Mark. On each of the schools' websites, there is a icon and a form that talks about switching cohorts. And on that is a simple form to fill out with the reasoning, the, and, and some justification of why it's important now to switch. Life happens and people are in different situations now than they were, due to work, due to health, due to many factors, due to comfort, their comfort level of where we are right now with the rising numbers in New Hampshire. So for all those reasons, we've developed a form that, once you fill it out, directly links to the principal, it goes to them, and the form indicates within 14 days, they will respond to you and with it, with a decision and certainly most of the time prior to, to find out more information if they need it, but within 14 days give you a decision on if it's able to accommodate your request. If that request is not able to be accommodated and you disagree, there is also an appeals process to that, that, with a letter written to Dr. McLaughlin, he will consider those as well.
Thank you, John. And, and so I just want to stay with that for just a minute because throughout the summer, when we asked people to share what their thought was, we put out two surveys, you remember, in mid-July and then right at the end of July into early August. And there were a lot of people who said, well, I might make this decision or that decision if I knew that I could switch. And at the time, we, we said that we, there would come a time when we would allow you to switch for any number of reasons. What I would tell you is that the experience factor now that we have, it's not theoretical anymore, the experience factor that we have says that switching is turning out to be quite a bit more complicated than it would seem. And I cannot, we don't have the time or probably the inclination at the moment to explain why it is that complicated, but imagine that you have, on the one side, staff who, as I said, have a right, every right as an employee, as every employee has in any industry, to seek to work remote in this environment under the Federal Cares Act. So those people based on, or, or, or Family Medical Leave or Americans with Disabilities Act, any one of those is a justification for a teacher to work remotely. And that has to be accommodated. So you have that on one hand. On the other hand, you, we didn't force people to do one thing or the other, we gave them an option. And schedules had to be built with those two variables in place. And without getting into detail, what I can tell you is that it is a house of cards. It is very fragile. And as simple as it might seem to say, well, just remove my child, please, from this cohort A to cohort B, or from remote to hybrid or vice versa, how challenging can that be? I can tell you that it can be incredibly challenging, not in the sense of, oh, it's hard work, we don't want to do it, but in a, it could dismantle the whole system. That reality is more obvious to us now than it ever was. So it is not as simple as saying, switch here, there, we, we cannot do it. That's why we had to put a moratorium so that we could actually build our schedules in the summer so we could be ready to start school at the beginning. so we could be ready to start school at the beginning of the year. So we are allowing the option to switch, but as John just pointed out, it has to meet certain, pretty significant criteria. And, and we are trying very hard to have it be fair and that people can have an opportunity to make the request and to have an opportunity to appeal if that's necessary or requested. So that's just another lesson learned. So at the last board meeting, board member Hardy and certainly others on, on the board had expressed a concern, rightly so, about helping our community to understand what would be the criteria that would be in place that would help people to know why a certain decision is made relative to a school closing or, in the worst-case scenario, the district closing. And so, at that time, I shared my hesitation to go the direction that some districts have gone. Because for, for me, in my experiences, as I'm living it, the COVID is not a predictable thing. And its impacts could be green one day and red the very next. And so, the way that those warning systems work is if you could imagine a predictable scaling up. So, okay, three kids today, so we're green. Seven, seven tomorrow, so we'll be moving into yellow. And 10 now, and it's red, and red means we close. But what we've learned is that one can become 10 very quickly, if not positive cases, possible contacts that could result in positive cases. And so, I've struggled with how to characterize for the community, how to account for those decisions. And so I'm going to share with you, or that, those processes. So I'm going to share with you now what, what we've come up with around that. So the first criteria would be the data. And the data relates to the slides that I showed you earlier, relative to community transmission and in-school transmission. That comes directly from the state of New Hampshire. So on any given day, if we saw ourselves as in the, you know, moderate or above category on the daily positivity rate or the number of new infections in, in, in the town or the transmission within the school, we have seen zero. That is a, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that is a proud statistic. In the midst of a pandemic, the things that our families have, have done to support us have created that reality. The things that our students have willingly done, wearing masks, maintaining social distancing, it's getting tiring, but they're doing it. And our teachers, who have diligently held people accountable, and our administrators, who are setting the tone and the expectation, that has kept it where it is. But if at some point, we saw those numbers increase to 15 to 30% or above, then that would be a clear indication that on a data-driven decision matrix, that we would have to most likely close a school or the district. But what we have encountered is that what's more likely to happen are a variety of scenarios that don't necessarily fall into the data category, but that are nevertheless real. So I'm going to talk to you about one. Scenario one, we'd call it the red, the red zone. That's characterized by sudden, unplanned, nonlinear, and unpredictable events. So, for example, we could have a bright and sunny Saturday afternoon, and that Saturday afternoon becomes red because of multiple close contacts within the school or across schools. Let's talk about that. So a student or a staff member tests positive. And then multiple close contacts within, with confirmed, with the confirmed positive individual within a school have been identified. Here's where it gets complicated. This is, this is a scenario that's real, as we're experiencing, and has nothing to do with data that would come from the state. So contact tracing is perhaps inconclusive. Meaning we can't entirely be able to recognize all the possible contacts, which creates an exposure that we think is unacceptable. Or the contact tracing is incomplete because we haven't been able to contact everybody who might be a close contact. Or it reveals widespread contact within a school. It's also possible that contacts cannot be isolated and/or separated from a population within a school. It might be that impacts on other school, it might be the impact of other schools on other schools due to beyond-school contacts. So in other words, there might be a case in one building of a person who's a confirmed case or, or was in close contact with someone who's confirmed. And that person has a sibling in another school, or maybe two, or maybe all. And suddenly, you have a situation where you have one school impacted, obviously, and two or more schools impacted, less obviously, but no less importantly. And these things happen overnight. It happened recently. And so, what I'm proposing is that a, what the community should understand is that on any given day, a school or the district might have to hit the red zone because its events have been sudden, unplanned, nonlinear, and unpredictable. And they don't relate to a gradual escalation of contagion or a predictable growth of that. It just happens. That's not data-driven, that's scenario-driven. What would be another scenario? We'll call it the purple zone. And that would be either sudden or anticipated. And this, we believe, relates somewhat more to staff or administration's capacity to conduct class and school operations. And that phrase is important because I want to bring you back to here. Look at the bottom left. Staff capacity to conduct class and school operations. That's from the state of New Hampshire. So what the purple zone suggests is that staff or administrators, children or family illness or quarantine due to COVID-19 locally or elsewhere require a significant number of people to have to not work. So let me say that again. We could have staff members or administrators who have children or family illnesses that require them to quarantine. And that might be local in Merrimack, or it might be the good number of people who work in Merrimack but live elsewhere, who themselves are impacted by the decision of another school district. Which would mean that some teachers who are parents need to now be home for a period of time, as is their right under, I believe, FMLA, or rather FFCRA, Federal Cares Act, to care for their children. That's not a privilege, that's their right as employees. And that might have nothing to do with Merrimack, but have everything to do with what happened somewhere else. Another scenario might be that more students request remote instruction than the current staff deployment can observe. And if that happened, then we would have to seriously reconsider our current model to accommodate that. Which might mean that we would need to go remote. Another scenario, more staff requiring remote instruction assignments than current in-person instruction can allow. What does that mean? Staff, as I've just pointed out, this might not be well-known, but it ought to be. Staff have a right to the same accommodations that anyone else has. And if by their circumstances of their own health, their family's health, or what's happening in their community that they come from, require them to go remote for a period of time, and there are more of them than, than, than students live in a building, then you end up having students unattended. And so, that would be another scenario that we would need to consider. High-staff absenteeism. I will tell you that our staff has done just an outstanding job of, of coming to work. These people, I just cannot say enough about the Merrimack staff. And I'm not just talking about teachers, I'm talking about every category, paraeducators, food, custodial, administrative assistance, technology. I, I'm, I'm forgetting some, I'm sure, but you know my point. They have been outstanding. But here's the deal. We have, next bullet, a regular flu and cold season approaching. Staff are likely to get ill, just like everybody else. And when they do, now more than ever, we are saying, you can't come to work. It's not a choice, just like it's not a choice for a student. Because to keep the wheels on the bus, we have to try to keep our schools as safe as we can. And I will point out, there have been many who have commented to me that that's not our job. It's the parent's job to decide on an acceptable risk, and it's our job to just teach. And I just respectfully would say I disagree with that. And more than that, I don't, I think I have a clear directive from the board that we have to maintain a proper balance between our responsibility as educators and our responsibility to keep our students safe and their families. Because this is a case where if we're not careful, something that happens in a school could transfer to a home. And so, all of those purple scenarios, which have more to do with, with staff and the proportion of staff and students and so on in this ever-changing environment, could be sudden. In other words, you just have a cluster of ill people in London Derry. Let's say we have five teachers who live in London Derry. And they all work, you know, in the same building or what have you. And something happens in London Derry, and those people cannot come to work. Well, depending on how they're deployed, maybe we lose a grade-level team. Maybe we lose a lot of members of a department. There gets to be a point where we don't have enough substitutes to make that up. And so, there might be a need to transition to a school or district closure as a result. That could also be sudden, but it could be anticipated. We could see the writing on the wall. We could see requests coming in for certain accommodations that we can anticipate will hit us in a week, and we can have some time to plan for that. What I think is most troubling to folks is the suddenness with which things can happen. And I think of the middle school. People left that Thursday and that flex day Friday, and it was a beautiful Saturday, and had every reason to think they were coming to school Monday. And, and that changed. And you have no idea how hard it was to make that decision. And I have no idea how hard it was or is for those families who've had to deal with that decision. But there was no way that data would have been supportive of that decision. Because we didn't hit any of the standards that the state would put forth relative to infection. But what DHHS said over and over again to us was, in that particular case, we cannot predict how widespread this could be. And so, as a responsible community partner, we had to shut that school down so that we could limit contagion. And I'm pleased to say, as of today, one more day to go for Merrimack Middle School, and we happily can't wait to welcome people back on Monday. But right now, as with the high school, that situation has been contained from a health standpoint. And with all kinds of bad news floating around, that's, that's a pretty good story. But in any event, and by the way, I don't mean to diminish for one minute the impact that that's had on families and students. I know. But we are in a pandemic, and we cannot achieve both goals at the same time. Educating 100% of our students 100% of the time and guaranteeing their safety. It's just a round peg in a square hole. Just isn't going to happen. So what I want to point out now is to try to clarify what are some of the biggest factors that contribute to school or district need to transition to red or purple phase? And again, when I think of what board member Hardy was asking about, she was asking about, is there some information we can provide to our community that could give them some guidance? Knowing that we might have to go to a red zone pretty quickly, but what would be some of the factors that could create, that could contribute to that, that could be somewhat anticipated so that people might avoid that? So let's talk about that for a minute. Travel outside New England. This is not a Merrimack policy alone. This is a state mandate. And, and we have validated that by the board's taking action on a travel policy. What does that policy say? If you're a staff member and you're planning to travel outside of New England, it's your obligation to let us know. Not telling you you can't do it, but there's a consequence to doing that. And if we know upfront, then we'll be able to manage it. Likewise for families. This is not convenient for any one of us. My son is a senior in high school and would like very much to, you know, look at colleges, perhaps not right in New England, but at the moment, you know, I've got a job to do and I can't take them because of what it would mean for me. So we all have to make choices. However, in the case of travel, it is very important for people to be honest about it. Now, most have been. I will tell you that in each school, there are examples of folks who have not been fully, you know, haven't come forward with what they've been doing. And I would only say that to do that creates a risk for your family, your friends, and your school community. So I know that the reason that people might not want to own up to that is because the consequence is I'm going to have to stay home for a while. Well, that's true. But that is the only way that we're going to be able to keep school going. And I just cannot drive that home enough. If ever, there was a night to talk about the school-community partnership, it's now. And with holidays coming, people have choices to make. And we, we are not going to shut school down over the holidays. But what that means is that depending on how people interact over the holidays, there could be consequences to school and district operations. And that's just a fact. I can't sugarcoat it or call it any other way, that's a fact. So I am really imploring our community to think about that when they are gauging what their choices are going to be and their willingness to, you know, share that forthrightly. I would say that by a incredible percent, our families and our staff have been fantastic. Straightforward, honest, because they recognize their, their impact on the larger reality. So I really want to credit our families for that and encourage them to continue, and our staff, and encourage them to continue. What's another factor that can, could contribute? We know this, attendance at large gatherings. One of the biggest increases in transmission seems to be large family gatherings that seem very, you know, benign, but could potentially not be. Cold and flu season, again, let's remember, we are not distinguishing, nor can we distinguish, between a cold and flu that's normal and COVID. And so, when a student A cold and flu that's normal and COVID. And so when a student or staff member are ill. Uh, if that happens in too many cases, um, that could impact uh our need to go to red or purple. I was alluding to this a minute ago, inaccurate or incomplete reporting of travel or symptoms, whether it's intentional or unintentional. That could become a huge factor, huge factor. Uh, in our ability to predict what's to come and to plan for it. And then another factor would be not following district policy or procedures regarding masks, social distancing, hand washing and related. Uh, safety protocols. And and again, I want to just take this opportunity to thank our family and student community. Um, we could not have the numbers that we uh shared with you earlier. Um, if it weren't for their dedication to staying consistent and and true to this. And so. Uh, it's because of them and our teachers and our teachers, our wonderful teachers who have worked so hard. To. Instruct students wherever they are and at the same time. To insist on fidelity to these policies and procedures. So let's just. I've said for a long time that COVID is a community problem. And uh if it is resolved in a community partnership kind of way, we will come to a community solution. So let's just look at a few givens uh as I wrap up this portion uh of the presentation tonight. So what happens in the community happens to the schools. Um, and and I think that's a very important thing to drive home. We are open for six, seven, you know, eight hours a day for instruction. And we take what's given to us and we do the best we can with that. But right now in a pandemic, what happens in a family community? Or at a sporting event or holiday gathering or anything else. Has an impact on the schools and it therefore shouldn't be surprising that the schools are gonna have to respond in some way. To that. So what happens in the community happens to the schools. What's another given? COVID nineteen has interrupted schooling and and I can speak, I know I can speak for our leadership team when I say. One of the most devastating impacts of COVID nineteen has been on our ability. To deliver an education the way we know how. It is devastating. And I know that because I'm a parent of a child whose. Half of his junior year and all of his senior year is is not what it should be. And it is impacting, I worry, his ability uh to make, uh to have the. Next phase of his life be what it might be. Uh, and I'm dealing with that every day as a parent. So no one has to tell me about the impact on the interruption of schools. But I would rather have my son be safe right now. And not threatened with a virus that could hurt him or his family. And that's the same reality that we're experiencing right now in our school community in Merrimack. So it has interrupted schooling. Nobody thinks this is good. Nobody thinks this is right. And in a little while, you'll hear our continued efforts to address this issue and to continue to do better. But it has interrupted. During a pandemic, schools must seek a balance between their educational mission and their health and safety responsibilities. That's a given. Um, I I think that there will be folks in the community uh who will disagree with that and I I guess we'll just have to agree to disagree on that. But there there must be strike constructive balance. And right now with an illness like this, that's as unpredictable as it is, that can be uh as. Difficult uh to deal with. As any that we've seen for some and not knowing who that sum could be. We have to strike that balance. What's another given? We've learned this pandemic impacts can be swift and unpredictable. And and that's why a typical color-coded system. That imagines that you can just scale up and see what's happening around the corner just doesn't really apply. But what we've tried to do is accept that unpredictability and then try to codify that. Into ways where people can at least understand the criteria that was put into place in order for that to happen. Red. The unpredictability, massive contacts or purple staff-related. Um, and then the final given is that working together offers the best opportunity to meet and beat the pandemic challenge. Our principals uh will tell you uh every day that the. Their partnership with their families um has yielded great results. Great results in the context of a not awesome time. Nobody's pretending it is. But great results in that we are able to maintain school. And in many cases, doing quite well with that. Recognizing in other cases, we need to do better. We've kept transmission. To zero in schools and our community has kept it uh quite low uh outside of our schools. And that is the best example of working together that I can imagine. And so uh with that, uh I'm going to, uh, if you wouldn't mind, I'm gonna turn to John Fabrizio. Because what I want um for the board to hear now is. Inasmuch as we have just said that we're going to stay hybrid. I don't want the board or the community to think that what that means is we're throwing up our hands and we're saying. We're giving in to this reality and there can be no improvements. We have met as a leadership team, we meet every week, sometimes multiple times a week. And recently, our sole focus has been on that issue. What have we learned since September that is going to allow us to? Be able to. Refine our practice, our delivery. And uh and what can we put into place to implement those uh that learning and those changes? And so what John's gonna do now with some folks on the team is just to describe um that next step. That we're putting in place to make sure that hybrid doesn't mean status quo, that we're continuing to evolve and improve. So with that, I'm gonna stop sharing and I'm gonna ask John if you wouldn't mind picking it up from here.
Sure, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, and good evening, everyone. Um, I'm here tonight with our principals. Our directors and our real coordinator and Mark just mentioned that um. We have met often um over the last few weeks to try to talk about kind of um. Where are we and what's doable and where can we go from here? Um, tonight you'll hear from each building and each level about kind of things that we've talked about, things we've considered, things we've refined. In both our hybrid and remote model. We are, this team continues to work with their staff and students to meet the needs uh to meet everyone's individual needs. Uh, we've defined several, several strategies and strains and systems that we talk about. And the strains on our system itself, um, our staff strain is immense right now. The strain on our families is immense right now. The strain on uh rising numbers is immense right now. You can see that. But we understand all that and 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 through all that, we're trying to say. All right, if we are continuing in a hybrid and remote model, what can we do? What will we do? And tonight you'll hear some of that. Since um, you know, we we've come back, we've uh really, really just embraced. Having students with us either in 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 front of us in a. In 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 person in our hybrid model or remote making the connections with those students. That's been the joy of being with them. And I'm gonna focus, um, as I've said to our 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 team today. About five times when we've met, I'm gonna keep my my glass full. And I'm gonna keep on trying to move forward and saying, there's a lot of positives on what we're doing as we move forward as a district. We do have kids with us. We are maintaining. We turned on a dime in the uh at the at the middle school and we had to. And we worked as a team to refine and get education up and rolling again. We'll continue to be adaptable, but we'll continue to also make refinement and move forward as we go that, as as we go forward. Um, tonight we'll begin with the elementary school and then we'll talk about, then we'll go to the middle, the high. We'll, we'll move to Heather and speak about student services and then finish with uh with Bill, our um. Our real coordinator. So I'm gonna share my screen now. And I'll turn to Julie DeLuca and she can lead us off as an elementary team.
John, and thank you, Dr. McLaughlin, for your presentation this evening. Um, as many of you know, we, there is a comprehensive plan in place that has been in place. And this evening, the elementary principals will speak to some elements of that comprehensive plan. As John mentioned, we will continue to talk about things and practices that we will continue. As well as refinements to our practices and improvements. Uh, based on feedback that we've been receiving from families and the community. Uh, tonight I'm just gonna briefly discuss the infrastructure and the safety protocols. Uh, as Mark um has mentioned, we've had, uh, because of the comprehensive safety protocols we've put in place. We've been able to keep risk low in our community and keep uh most of our schools open. And um with that, uh, we have had strong considerations and still adhering to the social distancing measures. It's still at six feet. Um, some of our youngest learners, that can be challenging. Uh, but we still maintain that six feet is the proper uh protocol to continue to uh ensure that we put in place. We also continue to make sure that we invest in continued PPE equipment. Um, desk shields and so forth for some of our learners that require. Um, more direct instruction or added special education and support services. I'm very thankful to the families for reinforcing with their children, as all of the principals are around wearing masks. Our children as young as preschoolers are excellent at wearing masks and adhering to that. And so I'm very thankful as well as the principals are. To families for your support and ensuring that kids continue to wear masks at all times. From an in- infrastructure perspective, uh, we continue and uh kudos to Nancy Rose and her team. We continue to get devices out to families. We've had families contact us based on their individual needs. That have mo- needs for multiple devices, uh, document cameras for staff. Ensuring that we have the right materials for our remote learners. Our music, unified arts teachers are continually sending home materials, art, music kits and the like. And library books for our kids that are in the remote learning um environment. So those are just a few of the things that we will continue to do really well, thanks to our community and will continue to refine. Um, as we uh move forward. I think it's up to you, Marsha.
Thank you, Marsha. I'm sorry, I couldn't unmute. Thank you, Marsha. It's up to you.
Thank you. Um, good evening. Tonight I'd like to share a little bit about our social and emotional wellness. Systems that we have in place. First, all of our classrooms in grades pre-K through sixth grade. Have implemented weekly social and emotional learning lessons using our second step program. These lessons are now an integral part of our instruction, not only the once a week, but every day that they're carried out throughout the day. Also, our elementary classrooms start each direct instruction day with a morning meeting. These meetings provide students and staff an opportunity to strengthen their relationships. Another opportunity for students and staff to strengthen relationships is during recess. The students are supervised by known staff members. Often their classroom teachers or paraeducators that they typically work with in the academic setting. But this gives them an opportunity in a non-academic environment to work together or spend time together. And that really helps to build that bond and that relationship. We continue to refine our help desk process. We want students to have the supports needed to meet with success. And we wanna provide that help. So we have staff, we have teachers, we have paraeducators. And they all help to support students through a help desk process in all schools. Also, each schools have a student support team. They meet weekly and plan and implement support systems for students either individually. Or maybe a whole school-wide campaign that helps to support everyone, students and staff. Also, we currently have systems in place to support students just in all areas. Couple examples are. Uh, for students having difficulty with technology, um, maybe accessing. We can direct them to the right staff member to help them, put them in contact with one another. Or for students having difficulty being able to upload or submit work, we have staff members that can help them to do that. So those are just a few of the ways that we're offering support systems. And those are many of the ways that we're supporting. The emotional wellness of our students and in return it helps our staff.
Thank you, Ma. Thank you, Marsha. Uh, Michelle.
Sometimes if I, I have to talk for a minute, so can you hear me now?
We can, Michelle.
Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the refinements that we're going to make with home-to-school connections. So one of the things we've started with is. The responding to the feedback of the community when we went to completely remote last year. And the difficulty parents and students had navigating different per um. Learning platforms. And so many of you, I know many of you know that Canvas has been chosen and. Has begun the implementation process across um the buildings. Particularly for the up, for the lower elementaries, having a learning management system is new. So we have our first um training day on Monday and Nancy and her team have put together. Uh, a variety of different learning opportunities so that we will begin that implementation. Process consistently across the elementary school level, which would make. The delivery of the instruction on the independent practice days smoother and predictable for parents and students to navigate finding it. Um, another tool that we're adding is in to address the realization that no program will. Always meet the needs of all of our students at the same times. And that we, in order to make the hybrid and remote environment successful, we need to partner with parents. And so. You will soon find on each of the school websites, a feedback form that will be available. For parents to share things that are working with their child's teacher as well as things that the child may be struggling with. And so this is in addition to the support form that Marsha talked about, the system. But this is really a pa- a chance for parents to directly give us feedback. So that we may look at it at a classroom level, building level, and if necessary, a district level. So that will be coming soon. And the last thing that I'll talk about today is a new partnership with demonstrated success. This company puts together educational opportunities not only for staff but also for parents. So there will be information coming about workshops that are provided, they're they're live and then they are also recorded. To help parents support their students in both hybrid and remote learning environments. So those are just a few of the things the elementary school we're looking at implementing.
Thank you, Michelle. And Kim.
Buddy, it's nice to see people this evening um on this important date of uh of news to the community and to the. Those parents and staff. I'm gonna talk a little bit about curriculum and instruction. And wanna start off by recognizing as Dr. McLaughlin did, what an amazing job our teachers are doing at all of the schools. And what an amazing job her parents are doing in that partnership toward educating your children. It's new to everybody. It, we're in uncharted territory and we've all, we talk a lot about giving grace when things don't go just as. We wish or had planned. So um. We have mentioned and you've heard this before that we really wanted to devote the first six weeks of school to building relationships and routines. And um. You know, and that that kind, that might sound um a little bit jargon-y, but what it means really and looks like in the elementary schools is when you have students. Who arrive to school with their masks on and they get off the masks, how to get off the bus, I'm sorry, and they start to walk down the hallways. What does it look like to be socially distanced? When they arrive in the classroom, the classrooms look very different with the six feet apart. So getting used to the new environment, getting used to keeping your mask on, getting used to how it is that we go about having snacks safely and. Building, y- you know, just having that community feeling while we're. We have this uh very unique situation going on. And likewise, for those students who have been at home entirely, what does it look like to be um having a. Appropriate workstation at your um at your home. Um, what is, what materials do you need to have available? How do you manipulate the screen? How do you ask to be called on? How do you show evidence of your work? So it has taken a a that. called on? How do you show evidence of your work? So it has taken a, a, that bit of time to really, um, focus on those, uh, relationships and routines. And we would be, we doing the same thing where we, in a normal situation, we typically look at the first six weeks of school as an important time for students and teachers to get to know one another. And recently, we have, um, started, a- as many parents may be aware, we have started to administer a fair amount of assessments. And those assessments are looking at where students currently are and where they need to go. We like to think it, of it less as gaps and more of it as accelerated teaching and learning. So where do we need to go fast and where do we need to kind of do some reteaching? And it's of no child's fault that we're in this place where we have to reassess and reevaluate what our priorities are for the students. And then following those assessments, um, all of our staff, um, or all of our teachers meet in professional learning teams on Fridays. They're exhausting, they're Zoom, and the teachers are looking really closely at the planning for the next steps of instruction, looking at the curriculum and the essential learning components that they need to cover, and talking about student performance data so that we can try to, um, establish some small group instruction happening, both in both cohort, all, all four cohorts, I should say, A, B, C, and D. So what you might see, um, what families might see going forward is that the students, um, who are full remote might be put into breakout rooms for a period of time so that a small group reading lesson can take place. And they be, would be doing, um, constructive work in that time, um, and showing evidence of their work as they return, and they have their opportunity for small group instruction, um, based on the assessment and the child's needs. Um, off of that, I did want to just emphasize too, that report cards will be coming as, as, um, stated, um, in early December. But that also conferences will be taking place in November, and that's going to be a great opportunity for, um, families and teachers to talk about what's going well and where do we need, um, improvements based on a specific child's needs. So again, I just want to put a thank you out to everyone. Curriculum instruction assessment looks entirely different this fall, and, um, we're, we're making good movement and constantly looking at refinements. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Um, and finally, um, I'm going to talk a little bit about some considerations that we had, and I will stop sharing so you can see full screen. Um, you know, uh, a lot of these were mentioned by, by, uh, my colleagues as we just talked, um, through this. Um, we're doing some assessments right now. We're getting the first six weeks of school as we typically are. Um, we're looking at, um, where students are. We're creating groups for those students. We are working with Fernside and our system of care coordinator, and the helpers across the district in developing support groups for those targeted areas of kids that may be struggling right now. Over the next few weeks, again, Kim, Kim spoke to this, we have just launched, uh, new report card that was, uh, the previous report card that we can count back, Marsha and I was in, in place for 27 years. You know, so, um, it's a, it's a big change at our level to look at what standards-based education really looks like and develop those, those, um, reporting standards and explain those out to our parents at our parent conferences and to other communications, and start our feedback, um, loop for that, for parents about, what did you think about that report card? We'll be doing that throughout the coming months. And finally, um, our counselors and our classroom teachers are looking at how do we reconnect with kids, um, during some of our extended days and our flex days? What can we do in, uh, on those days that reaches out and supports them more? We're starting to develop some ideas around that, and, uh, we'll continue to do that to, um, you'll see over the next few months, we'll look at it like Heather will talk about this more too. Intervention groups, kids that have more needs, how do we bring them back more? And, and Heather will address that later in her, her, um, her, her part tonight. Um, so that's at the elementary level. I'm now going to move to, uh, the middle school level and, uh, move to Adam Carragher. And Adam, if you'd, uh, like to, uh, begin to talk about the middle school.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you very much, John. Um, I am gonna share, share my screen. Um, just so, there we go. See if that works. There we go. Um, so I really do appreciate the opportunity to come and, and be a part of this evening's meeting as we talk about, uh, collectively, uh, refinements and our continued to support of our students in the Merrimack School District. Uh, I'm definitely looking at it slightly differently, uh, maybe a little bit more simplistically, um, but would like to highlight a few areas in particular, uh, that are specific perhaps more to the middle school and, uh, and our quest to continue providing really the best experience that we can for our middle school students. So first and foremost, as Mark and Kim and, and everybody else, uh, said, I, I feel it's just incredibly important to note our appreciation of the amazing efforts of our staff, of our students, and of our parents. You know, to our staff, it's just a thank you for all that you are doing and have done to provide learning opportunities for our students day in and day out. And parents and guardians, thank you for, for partnering with us, for collaborating with us, to share in that role of providing the best education that we can for your students. And students, thank you for your perseverance and dedication to your education. As, as you grow older, it becomes even more and more evident that, that you can really take control and grasp and, and take off with your education as you become more vested in it. And I really truly do think that it is the impact of all of the efforts of staff, of parents, guardians, students, uh, that have made a difference to this point and will continue to make a difference for us as we move forward. So as, as we do look at our already really quite full plates, uh, of all of the stakeholders involved, uh, it is important to highlight that we are really looking for ways that we can help work in a more efficient fashion. To that end, I'm really highlighting three different areas tonight: academic, technology, and social-emotional. And this applies, of course, to all of not only our hybrid students, but also, of course, our remote students as well. And it's important to note that. So for our academics, we are, uh, reviewing the different supports, uh, that we have had in place. So for example, during the first quarter, staff members have provided a variety of different times and days when they would potentially be available to support students during the week or, or perhaps and/or on a flex Friday. We are looking at these times to see how, if there is any way that we might be able to be smarter in our timing of support to provide more opportunities for staff and student interactions. We will be working on a way to communicate that as well to all stakeholders who are involved. We understand and know that it is incredibly important to have that face-to-face, those interactions between staff and students. And we want to continue to refine and look for ways that we will be able to continue providing those opportunities. Related to our students' social-emotional, we know and understand the importance of after-school activities for our middle school students. It is very important that they feel and are connected to our school through different opportunities. To that end, we are exploring ways to provide opportunities for students, such as a drama club, such as an art club, and other after-school activities to help provide that connection for students to our community. We have also used and was highlighted at the previous, uh, board meeting, the, our attendance stoplight for days when students are not checking in in an advisory. This tool has allowed us to connect with numerous of students who have been struggling academically, socially, or emotionally. We have a team of staff that regularly review the information that the students provide through that stoplight and connect those students to the different resources that they may potentially need. We are also exploring other ideas to try and help provide, uh, continue to provide a, a learning environment for our students. And for example, um, we are, we are exploring with two advisories, uh, trying to determine how we may potentially be able to connect with students daily during the advisory period, whether they are at home, working in their independent day, or in the hybrid system in school. So those are, those are things that we are still trying to figure out the best way to move forward. As for technology, as with all the other schools and has already, uh, been mentioned, uh, we are working towards learning more about Canvas so that we can leverage this tool for all of our staff and our students and parents. This past week and a half, I don't need to, uh, get into it too much, but we have had to leverage some technology in some very different ways for all of our students at the middle school. So all of our MMS students participated in a remote version of the New Hampshire statewide assessment system. This was a very new and very different way in which we need, we participated in the state mandated test. While, as with everything else, we encountered challenges along the way, these challenges ultimately will help us if we ever find ourselves in a similar pl- position in the future. While not for, not new for our remote students and our remote staff, the last week and a half, we have been working with students on Zoom instruction for those who are traditionally or have been over the past quarter, our hybrid students and staff. I will say, thanks to the experience and the challenges that we worked through with getting the remote students up and running, we really have been able to reflect and be better prepared to begin our Zoom instruction for hybrid students during this time. It is also very important to point out, uh, the significant supports and efforts of members of our technology, uh, and guidance departments related to these. Um, obviously, there are a number of things that need to be, uh, troubleshooting and, and just challenges that arose when trying to administer, uh, assessments or make a transition with 560 students and, uh, 100 staff member to, to being completely and fully in a Zoom-type world. So greatly appreciate all of their efforts. So while that's not a comprehensive list of all of the things that we have going on, it is a few examples of the different ways that we are working on improving and continuing to connect with our students at the Merrimack Middle School. We will continue to refine and do our best to communicate, collaborate, and provide learning opportunities for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Sharon, to you.
Good evening, everyone. Um, you know, we've had an opportunity throughout this first phase of the reopening at the high school to kind of reflect on, um, what's been working well and what areas we can begin to explore to make some of these refinements. And so the six areas that we really are focusing on for refinements are in the areas of academics, uh, social-emotional, organizational, technology, communication, and also on our flex day. And I just want to highlight a few areas, um, underneath each of these categories. Um, it's, it's certainly, uh, there's a lot of things going on, but these are some, um, what I think are exciting areas that we're exploring and hope to be able to move ahead in the very near future. Uh, we are looking in the academic area and in getting some scheduling software so that we can begin to schedule students who may be having difficulty, um, into some of our skills centers, which are open to all students. But actually being able to have homeroom teachers and study hall teachers assist with that scheduling of students into those sessions, we feel is going to be very effective. We also, um, you know, we want students to be able to get some extra tutoring, um, and that might be, that scheduler, scheduler might also be an opportunity for students to get scheduled into, um, specific tutoring sessions as well. We, going along with tutors, we do have, um, some volunteer organizations at the high school, the National Honor Society, and the Math Honor Society students are, um, as always, very willing to tutor. So we're trying to figure out, um, how to work out the supervision of that and have students be in breakout rooms where the advisors or facilitators would be able to check in on student progress during those sessions. So we're working on that as well as some, um, staff-run after-school help sessions for students as well in the afternoon and possibly some evenings. So, um, those are just some areas in academics that I wanted to highlight, um, that we're looking for, um, refinements, and we're exploring and working toward those. In the social-emotional area, um, we have an amazing homeroom advisory team, a committee that has been working on really focusing on connection and community at the high school. And, um, they've really been spearheading some activities for the first, um, month of school, and also they're just this week, uh, if you've read some of my emails, you know that we have a variety of activities this week around just some fall Halloween-type activities and also, um, some social-emotional, um, you know, video that students are watching and having really, uh, good discussions with their homeroom teachers. We've really been working on building those relationships this year. And students are checking into Compass, um, on the homepage on the days that we, um, that they're not receiving that direct instruction. And some of the refinements we want to make around that are, um, you know, really that the homeroom teachers are checking in. Um, the students do a one through five star of how they're doing. If they're doing really well that particular day, they would get a, give a five star. So their homeroom teachers are watching that to see if it looks like the student might be having some difficulty and, uh, working on keeping the school counselor in the loop on that as well, so that when they're following up with students to say, it looks like, I mean, maybe you had a rough day, uh, the counselor is connected with that, and they will more easily be able to follow up afterwards with the student. We also have, um, we're identifying some students who do seem to be having, uh, more difficulty on those independent extension days, and some of our office staff are checking in and emailing and calling those students to see how they're doing. How are you feeling today? What are you working on? So that they have that person-to-person contact. Um, and, um, I think that, that that's going to be another great way to help students connect on those days that they're working independently. We also have a student support team, and I know other folks have that as well. Uh, we meet once a week, and we're really becoming more focused on our tier-three students and the, and the domain of behavior and just trying to make sure that we are, um, considering resources and streamlining our processes so that we can really help those students that are, uh, maybe in crisis or may need just, um, really immediate response. And, um, I think that's going to be an excellent team. Um, and we're really, like I said, getting more focused on that tier-three in that area. Um, in the area of organizational, and I'm really talking about, um, organizational skills for students, um, because one of the things that staff have really been reflecting on is that they, they feel like students need more help with some of their executive functioning skills. So, uh, a subgroup from our building leadership team has been working on creating lessons and working, um, with the book, um, you know, a book having to do with, um, executive functioning for teenagers, um, Smart But Scattered, and, uh, focusing on very specific videos and lessons that go along with that. And so in the month of November, in our homerooms, students are going to be discussing with our homeroom teachers, and then also being provided with tools, graphic organizers and planners, to help them to be able to actualize some of the information that they're learning in homeroom, and the homeroom teacher can follow up on that. So we're really seeing a need for that, and we're trying to focus our energies on trying to, um, build student skills in that area. As far as technology, we're all working on the migration to As far as technology, we're all working on the migration to Canvas and we're just excited to think about, you know, the fact that it will be consistent for, you know, parents and students and staff to be on that same platform. And that's happening, you know, it's been happening and it will continue to be occurring as we migrate to that platform. We do have, just, just to let everyone know that on the MHS homepage, there are a lot of resources for technology there. Just to remind you, and we're always trying to refine those, but parents with device requests are there also for technology support. There's a link on there. So if a student is home with a Chromebook and they need that immediate technology support, that there is a place for them to be able to go and to be able to access some assistance. So that's a reminder about that as well. As far as communication, that feedback form that's being developed is going to, I think, be really helpful for streamlining communication to teachers about specific questions that parents or students might have and also to department chairs as well. The, as I was saying about the homepage before, as far as communication, there's a lot on the MHS homepage under Spotlight. Also, there are some quick links and news on the homepage. So in addition to that, any of the emails that I send to parents, Mark Merrifield, make sure that we keep that up to date. And so parents would easily be able to find by date some information that has gone out because sometimes there's a lot of email that goes out and it's hard to sort through. You know, what important pieces of information are out there? So I appreciate that he provides that as links right on that homepage so parents can go there and find that information. Our PTG also posts weekly updates and they have a really great format right now. And they take all those emails I send and they consolidate everything into something that's actually summarized and readable and it's fantastic. So if there are parents that aren't on that distribution list, they can let me know and I'll pass your name along in the information so you can get on that list as well. As far as Flex Day, the focus really has been on, on students being able to use that day to catch up on their work. And as others have said, it's a significant planning day. There are department meetings throughout the day and there are at the high school role-alike course, staff members that teach the same courses are working together and they're planning for consistency with curriculum and assessments and working on those ELCs and how they're going to be able to work with students in a, in a consistent manner. Going along with that, there are, within each department, some common times that students can reach their teacher or reach the department chair or their school counselor, and those are also posted. So, you know, that's also available so that this, this planning can go on, but they know there'll be somebody at the computer, you know, reading emails during certain times so that they will be able to get a response if they have a question. So, you know, as Adam said too, I just want to thank all members of the community, the Merrimack community, you know, staff and parents and students too. The cooperation is unbelievable. In the morning, when I walk through the cafeteria in the gym, they just, students are automatically doing what, what's expected of them and it's just making all the difference in the world. They've been very respectful. I think they appreciate being in school. And the students that are remote, I've jumped into some classes and they seem to be doing very well connecting with their teachers remotely. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Sharon. Heather Barker, Student Services Director.
Yeah, I'm going to share my screen. And tonight I want to thank everybody for having me back. I love to come to the school board and share with the community what's going on in Student Services. So I'm actually going to slide my little view of all of you over. And I thought this was a, a great picture to kick off tonight, Updates from Student Services. Being an optimist, I'm looking at this as this is the tip of the iceberg of ideas and collaboration and forward-thinking and all the cool things that are going on in both our parent community that partner with us and our schools and our work with each other as leaders, teachers with one another collaborating and trying to find pathways for students to the learning. It's been really remarkable, as you've heard tonight. In Student Services itself, we have continued to focus on individual students and their individual needs. So we've started with the hybrid model. And from that position for in-school, in-person services, we've worked with individual special ed teams, principals, working together with those teams and myself to find pathways for students into the school as much as we can possibly get them in if they need those services in the school building. And when we talk about students' access to the learning, we're not only talking about the special education and related services, but how we can support students in accessing the general ed curriculum. So there's that two prongs that we've talked about since back in March that we're, we're really focusing on both. How do we help and support students who may have learning gaps, right? Or we're reaching back for, to access both the general curriculum and then how do we provide that direct specialized instruction in the related service they need? So again, we will continue to focus on individual children, their needs, and, and working with our school teams and our related service providers to find creative pathways for students to the learning. Additionally, we have continued to focus on offering that variety of pathways. So it, we are not and have not been focusing on sort of a one-size-fits-all or this is how it is kind of thing. But in fact, worked tirelessly, these teams, these school teams, those coordinators, your principals, your special educators, your classroom teachers, the paraeducators, all the support, including transportation, on figuring out how can we get the learning to students, whether if they're remote? How do we get that learning and instruction to students in the school? And if we possibly can, how can we get kids in more often while keeping those safety protocols in place? Because I couldn't agree with Mark Moore and the rest of the folks that have talked before me. The reason our schools are open is because we have really adhered to those safety protocols and it's mattered. And so it's really important when we start thinking about students with educational disabilities or 504 plans or a student who have gaps in their learning, who can come to school. Trying to keep the school open is certainly something we talk about all the time. Another focus area for us is that we have continued since school started, regardless of if a family was remote or hybrid, we have worked with families who were remote, working with the school principals to bring them in when we realized or a family reached out and said, this is not working and is, is there any possible way to move to a hybrid? We have done that. So we will continue to look on a individual basis, student by student, how we can provide their special education and their access to the general education curriculum as well. We have focused on exploring different pathways to live instruction in the event. This is something that's been on my mind since March and with the, the sudden pivot of the middle school in the past week and a half, it's really brought it to the forefront and driven home to me. I know how important it is for children to get into school. And certainly it is critically important for some students who really cannot access learning remotely to be in school if we can. So one of our major focus areas in the coming weeks will be, how can we pivot if a school has to close, working with that school building or grade level or working with, you know, the district personnel on finding a pathway into the school if it's safe? That, that's the critical piece. If it's possible, using our ESY model. So not, there wouldn't be general education there obviously, but for a small subset of students who really can't access learning without that live instruction, is there a way to use an ESY-type model to organize direct special education instruction, paraeducator support, all of the other related services in a really safe way? So that's something we're going to explore. I'm not sure it's possible, but it's certainly worth looking into. Additionally, we're going to continue to expand the Flex Day Special Education Services with trying to find more pathways to live instruction for some students, finding pathways to just check-ins with kids and families or more analog, like traditional activities that kids could be doing on Fridays and getting some support with that, related services. And we continue to use those Flex Days for evaluations for student, bringing students into the building, including some remote students who can come in when there's no other students there. So that has been a bonus. We have continued to focus on and will continue to focus in the coming weeks on expanding our support of the general curriculum, that supportive instruction, that reinforcement, the assistance with general education core program and access to paraeducators. How can we improve and enhance how we're doing those Flex Days? I hear a lot about that from parents in our partnership in the coffee and conversation about how hard remote days and Flex Days are for students and families, especially for students who don't have necessarily the entry-level skills to enter into grade-level curriculum independently or in extensions. They need people supporting them, whether that's remotely or in person. We'll continue to explore that. I've talked about it here before. We continue to look for a way, and we've done it in a very limited basis so far, trying it out, of a way to offer safe spaces or that clinic-type model of in-person services for our remote students to be able to come in, even if it's just one time a week for a speech, not doing it remotely or one time a week for PT or a chance to come in and work with their special educator or a paraeducator live when it's safe and it can be accessed in a way that it can work for the family. So we will continue to work on that piece as well. We continue joyfully with our parent partnership and offering parents their voice in collaboration with our Student Service Offices and the rest of our district. And finally, we have been working really hard on partnerships with community agencies and we will continue to work on that. We recently enjoyed having a PIC presentation at our coffee conversation about how to ask the right questions at an IEP meeting. We're working with NAMI about coming to a parent coffee and sharing some strategies around how to support students and parents in dealing with depression, anxiety, stress, partnering with Gateways for families who have students who receive services through them. How can we work with them to offer some of those services through Gateway at the home while we're, we're Zooming or offering remote services so that we can partner? So the learning's more accessible. Working with the Greater National Mental Health Group to see if there's a way to partner with them about bringing some community-based mental health services to schools, not as a school service, but as that community organization, being able to be at the school so it's more accessible for some of our students and certainly other partnerships that we've been working on. So those have been focus areas for us and a lot of that has grown from the feedback that we get weekly from our parents that we partner with. So our parent coffee and conversations have continued. We recently changed the time to accommodate some of the parents who have now need, as we started these in the summer, we were going from two to four, but now we're going one to three because some parents couldn't join later and some parents need to go pick up their kids and they're actually calling from the pickup line to stay on the phone to be in the coffee. So it's really remarkable what's going on in the Merrimack community and we've gotten some shout-outs from the state and the DOE about the parent, the parents in Merrimack School District. Recent guests we've had have included Dr. McLaughlin and the parent group are thrilled. He's going to come join us again real soon. We've had Bill Morris and John Fabrizio came, had a big showing and talked about the real and getting real and all things remote and parents were able to ask lots of questions. As I said, we had Maureen Shields come from PIC and she's definitely coming back. It was a great opportunity this past week. We've had our district coordinators come by on several occasions and just drop in and parents love that, as do the coordinators. Ferencide comes every single week and checks in with families and listens and is partnering with them around some other opportunities for our social, emotional learning and wellbeing for our children and families. And we've actually had our homeschool liaisons, which we now have in our elementary schools, a dedicated social worker at our upper elementary, middle and high school. So we've been working on expanding those services and partnership with families and their homes. So those folks have come by. So if you have ideas on other folks that want to come, I heard from Maureen, who works with the state around developing these parent partnerships in communities, that we, they've had school board members come to some of these coffees. So that's an invitation if you'd like to join us one of these days. But that's what's going on and I always include this when I come because it's the same link every week. Anyone can join and it's from one to three. And sometimes we end up going to about 3:30, but it's a great thing. So these are the things that are happening in Student Services and we're always looking for feedback and ideas and input. So thank you very much for having me tonight.
Thank you, Heather. I'm going to turn to Matt Chevonal now. And Matt, if you want to give an update kind of on some of our, where we've done with some of our protocols that we put in place for safety and for maintenance.
Oh, thanks, John. First of all, I want to thank Tom Toussot and Mike Dumay, Facilities Director and Assistant Facilities Director, all our maintenance mechanics and our terrific custodial crew and the cooperation that we have received from the Merrimack Educational Support Staff President Cindy Parrier in order to make this happen. One of the big items that we were looking at is to be able to offer more services during the day. So most days during the week, there are two custodians on duty instead of one, barring any unforeseen, you know, personal days or whatever, there's usually two available. And then to ensure that the buildings are sanitized every single day for the first four evenings of the week. We've gone from a five-day, eight-hour schedule a week to a four-day, 10-hour schedule. So the custodians on the second shift work 3:00 PM till 1:00 in the morning. This allows them to do a terrific job at cleaning the buildings and more importantly, utilizing the electrostatic fogging machines that disinfectant kill COVID-19 when it is on. Any, any, any type of surfaces and even underneath desks is an electrostatic sprayer that they're using every single, every single evening in all areas of the building. We've also maintaining the portable sinks that we have gotten throughout the buildings. I don't know if they, they've stayed static or they have moved about as needed, but they can move about as needed. We've maintained the hand sanitizing stations, the hand sanitizers in each classroom. We have an adequate supply. We have sanitizing wipes. We have sanitizing spray that we've put forward to, to each school. And we're, you know, utilizing that during the day with the help of, you know, student volunteers and teachers, obviously. And then in the evening, we're doing it again. We also, I want to thank the board for passing the mask policy. I think that's been paramount in how successful we have been with any in-school or lack thereof in-school transmissions. Without the mask policy, I don't think we would really be where we're at and that's really important. And even on the, on the bus, I have to thank STA. You know, we broke up the run, so now there's half as many kids on the bus. So there's social distancing there as they're in, as there are in classrooms. Every kid that I've seen, I've seen a lot of buses go by. They're all sitting down there with their masks on in the bus. As far as any, any kind of, you know, activities going on in the bus, as far as little misbehavior, a little anxiousness, whatever, the masks, masks and the social distancing. The masks masks and the social distancing seem to have calmed that down quite a bit. So the kids are really. Doing a bang up job of staying in their seats and. You know, not, not getting into an interplay with other kids and keeping their masks on. One, I think one of the principles, I think maybe it was Kim. Mentioned, you know, watching the kids get off the bus with which with their masks on, you know, even the the little bitty ones, you know, so. You know, they're, they're getting with the program and they're abiding by it, by it. It really kind of makes me, me feel proud of the kids and the. You know, the dress bus drivers who are enforcing that on the bus. And I don't think they have too much of a problem enforcing it because I think everybody's. Really been cooperative. So a combination of, you know. Materials that, you know, for the first part of the year. Have to tell you, it was touch and go. It was pretty tense in my office and all over trying to get all these materials together. And in stock. You had to go to various sources. There were shortages all over the place, but we, we did it. We accomplished it. And now we're at a point where we can maintain an inventory for the remainder of the year as companies providing. These materials, these chemicals, these solutions, these disinfectants have kind of caught up with demand. And now we're actually getting, you know, instead of me having to hunt down people, kind of like Nancy Rose having to hunt down. You know, Chromebooks. With her secret source that I know of, but I will not divulge on air. You know, things are getting a little bit better. You know, I wish Nancy could have a little bit better, better luck, but there's still a darn shortage with. With tech and getting, getting that in there. You know, and it's just, it's not about luck. It's about, you know, Nancy's perseverance with keep, keeping, keeping after it and keep it going. And so that's still we've been doing and everything seems to. Have been working out fairly well as we kind of remain that consistency and the expectations of every day such and such will happen. And it's been consistent and it's been something that you can count on every single day. Buses are taken care of, schools are taken care of. Children are behaving, mask policy is in place, that's working out really well. So when it all comes together, it all comes together fairly well and it's, it's something you can, you know, like I said, you can count on every single day. So when you, you know, put your scoop, your kid on that bus or you drive them to school. You're, you're pretty much guaranteed that you're going to have the same level of excellence as far as. You know, cleanliness and sanitation and disinfectant to the absolute best of our ability every single day and nothing, nothing less than that. So that's my little brief update.
Thank you, Matt.
Didn't have a screen to share, John. I wasn't fancy like the rest of you guys, but.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. And we will finally conclude with our real coordinator, Bill Morris.
Matt, I don't have a screen either. So while we're.
Good, Bill. I'm happy.
So first I just want to acknowledge Mark's and John's. Vision for this real program, the, the Remote Education Academy for Learning. And I also want to, you know, thank the, the board for seeing the value in. In this vision. And it, we are really building, you know, I think since. This whole pandemic began, I think. Certainly we've heard unprecedented many times, but we've also heard, you know, building the ship as we're going and. I, I, I kind of see this as building the rocket ship as we're going. And, and so we've, we, we have come quite far in the last six weeks. But the bulk of the focus has been on building relationships. And there's all these different constituencies to do that with. You know, first with building administrators, you know, you know, and that's involved meeting. You know, bi-weekly, bi-weekly with them. You know, talking, you know, what do they need? What do the teachers need? What do their students need? And then sharing, you know, what have I learned? That I, that, that, that benefit them to know so that we can work in tandem. And then the next layer are the teachers. And we have, as we've progressed, we now meet bi-weekly with every. School remote group of educators. And they have an opportunity to talk. And sometimes that's all they want to do and they have an opportunity to share. You know, these are, you know, this is, this is what I need. Can you help with this? It could be. You know, a. A student that they want to figure out how to support better, a parent. You know, and, and so, so, so we talk and we, we figure that out. And then there's so much value for them to be, being able to talk together and. The power of voice and, and agency, you know, for people that are really. You know, pioneers in their own right because many of them. You know, this is so unique to their own. You know, profession and their own work. Another piece of, of the work that's been happening is. We, many of the remote teachers have had the opportunity of, of having drop-ins where. I've spent time in their, in their virtual room. It kind of reminds me of like Star Trek beaming in and, and so, and in that time. We have a, a group of tireless educators. It's, it's so. Obvious when, when you watch, they are working so, so hard and they're engaging with children. And children are happy to see live teachers, you know, zooming with them. And it's, it's really neat to even see like in, in, you can hear in the background grandpa or someone else kind of supporting. It's really like a. That adage of, you know, a, it takes, it takes a village and, and, you know, and. Or, or it takes, you know. Merrimack to, to make this all work. And so, so many, many of the teachers have had a drop in. Which has been followed up with some real. Supportive feedback on, on what we're seeing, what was observed and. And then there's been, they have responded to that as finding that to be validating and, and helpful. Another area of building relationships has been with the families. We have, like Heather had said, John and I've met with the parents during one of our coffees. And they, they, they are partners and, and we want to hear. How are things going for them as our partners with their children? What do they need? What's working well, what's not? And some of them have also reached out individually for their own particular needs and. And then it's about bringing them together. With the adults, whether it's an administrator or whether it's a teacher and putting a plan in place and helping them. To, helping them for the better of their children. And so we. You know, it, this, this is just a continuance of, of, we will continue to build. Those relationships, you know, because with relationships come trust. And then we can, we can then take things to another, another level of, of refining. Instructional skills, but it, it's a foundation that we're building. But, but that, you know, rocket ships, you know, coming together and. And so, and that's, you know, really with, with everyone's kind of. Help with that, you know, and we have really, we've just begun this journey and. But we'll continue to assess our efforts and. Seek improvement on our instructional practices. You know, with always, you know, focus on, you know, best practices and what's best for students. And, and what's best for the Merrimack School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you, everyone. That was a very thorough report out and I think that we all. You can all see some common themes and the, the, the message too that I, I want to say is that we're. We all would love right now, nothing more to, to fully open our doors and fully have. You know, go back to having kids every day. That is a dream of ours. We're keeping that dream. And that vision still in our eye. We haven't forgotten that. And I think we all would agree to that. And I think as we move forward, we'll continue to monitor the, 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 the. The levels and the data mark mentioned, we'll continue to partner. With our families, which we need to partner with and we will continue to refine and improve our instructional. Outlay for, for our students and families. So thank you. And Mark, back to you.
No, I thank you all. I really thank the team for being here tonight and I'm sure the board has. Questions and so I'm more than happy to turn it over.
Great. Thank you. Questions? Andy and then Lori?
So thanks for the details. I think, you know, you guys certainly covered a whole lot of information over this two hour or so period that we've been here. And I want to actually circle back to something that was really early on. In the discussion and that's the transition from parents deciding, parents, students made a decision to switch from. Remote to hybrid or hybrid to remote as things go on because. While we as a district may choose to keep our buildings open as things change. Parents may need to do it. So two questions. One. You talked about. When we've, when they use the form to fill out to request a change, they'll get a response within fourteen days. Can you explain? The reason for that length of time to be able to respond?
I can begin by, you know, I can certainly turn it over any of the principals to, but I'll start with the fact that, that. That there's factors in place that with scheduling is really what it is. And what I mean by fourteen days to respond, I mean an answer. I mean, yes, we can do this, but there's probably multiple conversations along that way. It's just that we put a fourteen day timer to say, it can't be that. Well, we're thinking about it. We're thinking about it. We wanted to say what's reasonable and it's really like reasonable within a couple of weeks of school. We're making that, we're deciding to make that change or not.
So is it, is it, I'll just clarify. So is it safer to say that if a person puts a request in? They will likely be contacted ahead of time to start talking through the options such that at the end of fourteen days. Both the administration as well as the parents will understand where it's at. Is that a better? Okay.
Sharon, Sharon, would you like to speak to a little more because you've had a few of them?
Yeah, if I could just add that, so they might ask for clarification from a school counselor. Or in some cases, a case manager as we're trying to gather information. About whether or not there's, how much room is in, you know. Do we have in certain remote classes or do we not have any room? And some of it's also looking at. Those students that really are not able to access. The instruction as well as maybe other students might be able to. So it's taking a look at some of that information and trying to figure out where the, where the largest need is. And then trying to gather information from parents and families, but it could also come from a variety of sources. I just wanted to add that to. It could be case managers and school counselors and the principal reaching out.
So as, as a follow on to that, so my second question, actually Sharon is probably better aimed at you because. We know based on discussions we've had at earlier board meetings that. The classes that are available to students is different at the high school if they're remote versus hybrid. In some cases, a lot of times it's overlap, but in some cases there's differences. If a, if a student switches. From let's say hybrid to remote, there's a likelihood that a class that they're taking hybrid will not be offered remote. You know, like an AP class or something like that. So how do, how do you handle that situation and? More generally, as we move forward in time, especially as we started getting into second semester. Is the district looking at ways to? Sort of even the playing field in terms of the kind of classes that are available being between remote and hybrid. So. I'll tee that up and then I'll, then I'm done with my questions. So.
So Andy, you're right. Some of the classes are not offered in special, especially in the area of some of the electives that we have at the high school. What we did try to ensure is that students would have on the must haves and make sure that we would ensure that they could make progress toward graduation. Through the courses that were also offered remotely and we do have a lot of classes that are offered. They may not be the exact electives that they've taken now for a whole. Just about a quarter of the school year. So that's problematic. And the other piece is that V H S classes, which is one of the online resources. They're closed now for the first semester. So students can only. Sign up for them during a certain window or period of time. Some of the other online courses do have rolling enrollment so they can. Sign up for some of them if there are spaces available. But now we're getting, you know, it is the first quarter. And so we are taking a look at a case by case basis and trying to make sure that. We can try to meet the needs of the student and so we're working hard to do that. And the fourteen days is really to investigate some of these. You know, individual situations to see how we can work with students and families to come up with a positive result.
So the, the other part of the question is. Is as you look at second semester, I know there was some question about the differences between remote versus hybrid. Are, is the district looking at ways to? Offer more parity between remote versus hybrid as we look at second semester offerings?
So we're just starting to think about second semester with some of the challenges that we faced with doing first semester. We are already looking at that, but we're not. In a place right now to even know necessarily what we're offering yet for second semester.
But, but it's safe to say that you're aware of some of the concerns parents had that you're trying to. Look at that as part of your planning though. Is that a safe assumption?
Well, there, there, it's complicated because there's a lot of considerations. We have staff that are. Are remote and need to be remote as Mark talked about before. And some staff are not certified to teach certain classes while other staff are certified. For those. And if we're providing the must haves for students. We have to make sure and ensure that we can provide those first and foremost. And so a student may not, they might be offered some electives, but they may not be the exact electives that they might have in, in a different setting.
Okay, but I'll just close to say as we get closer to that, it'd be great if you keep the board apprised of the progress you made towards second semester planning because I think it's. I'd like us to be more aware of some of the decisions early in the process so we can. We can help ask questions and answer parent questions when they come in. So. Okay, I'm done.
Lori? So thank everyone for their time tonight. I, I want to reiterate, reiterate that opening closings of schools should be. Guided by a risk based approach. And at a local level, right now we're at a minimal risk. So I think the focus really has to be is what is the capacity of our school to adapt their system? To operate safely. And according to. The. Department of Education, New Hampshire grades K through twelve back to school guidance fall of twenty twenty. In-person instruction means when students reach, return to classrooms in person. And it's the goal that we're going to return as many students as possible. And the school setting should be appropriately modified. And we're doing all of the safety precautions, socially distancing, wearing masks, personal hygiene. So I am hopeful that we are going to start trying to get more kids back in school through either. Heather talked about Fridays, working with that risk students. I know that, you know, our school district, you know, is, is trying to meet the needs of our, our community. I really need to be evidence based and. I would like to say that I know that other school districts in the area have opened up fully five times a week. So I was curious to know about data about, you know, what kind of, you know, situations that they had. For the last, you know, eight weeks of school that, you know, they were able to stay open or how they, you know, they had to close sometimes, you know. What are some of the things that other school districts are doing and how are they, you know, weathering this storm? I'm also really concerned about at risk students. I know that not all students have the same educational supports at home. And so I want to, you know, look in the long term, like how are we going to fill those educational gaps? This is not a Merrimack problem. This fall, two hundred fifty thousand fewer students enrolled in college. Something like a hundred thousand students. I had this at the D O E today, a hundred thousand students. So far have not applied for college that did last year. The state is talking about our high school dropout rates being really high and they're very worried about. about our high school dropout rates being really high, and they're very worried about that. And, you know, New Hampshire always nationally was reckon, you know, recognized for our low high school dropout rate. So these are all long-term situations and problems. And, you know, I think our, our goal is to, to try to, you know, reach our students' needs. And I just wanted to just hit those points.
Any other questions? I have just a couple. One of them is, actually a couple are around timeframes. And I just, maybe you mentioned this earlier, but I just want to make sure that I, I understand. You talked about, you know, people having this opportunity to be able to change. Is that something you're expecting to be ongoing? Like you're not opening up that opportunity for a finite period of time? That we're going to continue now moving forward until such time that, you know, we no longer need to, to allow this? Or is there, you know, any, any thoughts around, you know, any of the constraints around time, you know, for parents that want to switch between remote and hybrid or hybrid and remote?
So, so, I'll, I'll, Mark, go ahead.
No, go ahead, John.
No, I'll start because I think the discussion really is. So, so right now, we're in that mode where, where we are utilizing the form. The only thing that, that I think Andy alluded to it very astutely, that there's going to be some changes because we're switching semesters and courses at the, at the high school. So maybe during that time, we may have to come back and have some considerations about what are we doing so we can set numbers and set, and set courses and things like that. That's the only really time that, that, that may be a difference for us in, in doing some of this. Just so we can kind of regroup at that midpoint of the year to say, what are our solid numbers to assign teachers and courses? And that's kind of, and it may affect the middle a little bit too, but those are only, only two places really where we are.
At this point in time, we don't have a date that we're going to just, you know, move forward, you know, with those requests in the process you've described.
Yep.
Okay.
Mark, would you add anything? I'm sorry. Would you add anything, Mark?
I'm in agreement with that.
And then the other thing that I wanted to make sure that we were clear about is kind of the expectations, you know, where we go from here. So, you know, you've described and, you know, shown, you know, some of the, you know, about how we're going back hybrid. You're looking for some optimizations and some way to use lessons that we've learned. But I also wanted to make sure that, you know, if parents had questions, like is there another date? You know, what I'm understanding is that we're not taking this another two months from now. We're kind of going forward until we need to make other changes based on data, based on what's happening in our community. And I just want to make sure that parents and families and staff have a really good, and teachers have a really good understanding of, of what this means going forward.
Yep. No, thank you, Cinda. So, I, I will, so, at the moment, I think that as we, as we look at the holidays, cold and flu season, spiking cases nationally and locally, that, that we're going to stay hybrid for the time being. Now, obviously, we look at data all the time. And we have no interest in staying remote or hybrid one second longer than we have to. So I just want to make that clear. That's obvious. And the minute that we have a scenario whereby we see that transmission is, is down, that, you know, whatever number of factors lie around the corner that we can't perceive now, we will come to the board and we will tell them, and it will be the happiest day I've had in my time in this role, that we are ready to go fully back to school. And when such a time comes, we will provide an opportunity for parents to have time for transition. I think there's been some concern as to whether a decision of some sort will be made and there won't be taken into account that families have built schedules around the current reality. And we understand that. And, but that doesn't mean that if, if next week, we have a red zone case in a building, that we're, we don't have the luxury of predicting that to people. But when we have the opportunity to predict, we will. And, and so, at the moment, hybrid is the name of the game. And we are going to look every day and, and try to maximize what we can do at the moment. And as soon as we can go back safely, we will.
Okay, thank you. I did just want to take a moment to thank everyone for these updates and the transparency into the scenarios that the district and community may face. Thanks for the leadership team for joining this call tonight. I know it's getting late into the evening and, you know, you're working so tirelessly, tirelessly, you know, all the time. And, you know, to join us tonight is very much appreciated. You know, thanks for everyone who's watching from home, you know, along the same vein, you know, we're all in this together. And thank you for your support and cooperation that you continue to provide with, with everything. And, you know, it certainly doesn't come without frustration. You know, that moment when you get that call that you have to come get your child and you're running to quick get a COVID test and not to mention every, everything else, because there's really no one spared from this horrible situation. Everyone has been affected by it. Everyone's dealing with it and everyone is frustrated. You know, thanks to our teachers. So let's just take a moment to talk about that. And our staff as well. You know, essentially, you know, we depend so much on them for the instruction that our children are getting and what they're doing day in and day out. And, you know, so many of these, you know, our teachers have families at home, you know, they're trying to manage the frustrations that our parents are managing in, in many cases and, you know, trying to juggle everything that they need to do and as well as, you know, how to stay healthy themselves. You know, and I would say along that, I mean, you know, our teachers are working around the clock as well. And I know that I got an email from a teacher, one of my children's teachers at 4:07 a.m. this morning. And I don't think that's a complete exception. I think, you know, everyone's doing what they can in every minute that they're, you know, can find the time to do something. And I can only imagine, I'm not a teacher myself, but with all the questions that parents have and what those email inboxes look like, you know, I, I, I just know, I'm speaking to you teachers, that I know that you are working so hard and so tirelessly to continue to, you know, provide everything that you're doing for this community. So, thank you. And I'm also going to take a moment to call out, there's so many I could call out, you know, going through the situation that we're going through. But our custodians, I mean, they're keeping our place clean. You know, they're keeping germs from spreading. And those tireless efforts are also very much appreciated. And everybody else that's doing what they can. So I just, you know, I kind of want to repeat what Kim said earlier and really take that a moment to speak to grace. And, you know, thank everyone for the grace that they've provided to the district, to each other, you know, to our families. You know, this is a time for grace. This is a time to come together as a community. And that's exactly what we're doing. So with that, we're going to move on to the next agenda item. And that is specifically the process for developing the school board budget message to administration. So what I'm asking the school board members to do is to put together your budget message so that when we meet next week on Monday, the 2nd, November 2nd, the Matthew Thornton Room, that we're prepared to provide administration with the words that we have to say in the budget message, that we want to relay to provide direction as the budget is being processed. So for the new board members, I'll reach out to you individually regarding what that process looks like. I know there's some of us that have been on the board for a long time. And this is just a very natural process. We've been through it. But the idea would be that we can provide on Monday just that direction and instruction that administration needs to be able to move forward. We're going to kind of take this a little bit differently this year. In the past, the school board members have provided that. The chair has kind of consolidated it. But we all have that voice and what that message is. And I think just with the situation and the timeframe that we're looking at, I'd like to be able to have the school board members be able to relay their messages individually. And we've done that, you know, before. That's nothing new. But then let administration take direction from that. I'm happy to recap in, you know, our second meeting in November, what those key themes that we've, we're seeing are. But I think we can go ahead and, you know, get that message out on Monday. Any questions there? Any comments? Okay. And then, so then, basically the, the final item, item number five is the public participation on agenda items. I'm going to, I know we have at least one or two items in there. Shannon has been monitoring, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to her to be able to provide this information.
Thank you, Cinda. So we have no forms this evening, but we do have one email. And I will read that into, on the air. So it is from Mark Heimberg at Seven Linda Lane. First, let me commend our teachers and administrators district-wide on delivering a quality education to our students in the most bizarre circumstances. Not only are our students learning, but they're engaging in sports and other enrichment activities and trying to live as normally as possible. While we continue to struggle with the impacts of COVID in our community, nation, and world, I would like to emphasize that none of the changes being implemented are permanent and are the result of heroic efforts across the board. As such as parents and community members, we need to be patient and support our school district, its leadership, and those in the trenches to the best of our ability and adapt to a liquid situation. My sincere thanks. And that concludes public comments.
Okay, great. Well, with that, that's the last item on our agenda. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Made by Shannon, second by Andy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries by zero zero. Thank you and good night.
Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel-to-gavel coverage of town and school board meetings, to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Good morning. I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack New Hampshire Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.